Everyone, we're gonna get started now here pretty quick. If you can please, can everybody hear me? Okay, alright. I'd like to welcome you to the 2025 General Election Candidate Local Candidates Forum. I'm glad that we have such a large crowd in the room today because your vote matters. The first election that I was involved in back in 2005, there was a difference of fourteen votes between the second place and the fourth place winner. And so, the difference there, a few votes meant the difference between a four-year term for a city commission, a two-year term for the city commission, and somebody sitting out. So, your vote actually does count. My name is Blake Jorgensen. I'm a former city commissioner and a former mayor of the city of Ottawa. And I retired from public office about three years ago when I moved outside the city limits. And so, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Just as a reminder, please turn off your cell phones to limit any interruptions. And restrooms are located down the hall, just as a housekeeping item. All questions from the floor must be in writing, submitted in writing to our question table over here. And as I stated earlier, they will be kind of paraphrased because several people have similar questions. And if you do have a question that you want to ask, please raise your hand and we'll bring a note card to you. So that Richard Jackson back in the corner has the note cards. First off, I would like to thank the sponsors, the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce Legislative Action Committee, radio station KOFO, and the Franklin County Farm Bureau Association. And also would like to thank the city of Ottawa for allowing us to use their facility and technology. To start off with, we have three of the four candidates that are running for school board. There are three open positions, and the three positions are four-year terms. And unfortunately, Glendy Spiegel was not able to attend this evening. But I'm gonna jump right into things because we have a limited amount of time, and we want to get as many questions asked as we possibly can. So, we'll start with Chris on the first question here. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for the school board position. You'll have two minutes for this question.
Okay, Chris Cunningham, I've been a member of this community since, I moved here since about 2001. My wife, when we got married, she moved here with me. We've been long supporters of the community, been active in the community. The reason I'm running for school board is I want to continue to see the progression that we've made just since I've been on. And in no way am I taking credit that because of me being on is why we've made these gains. But our graduation rate eight years ago was around seventy-seven percent, and we're over the ninety percent threshold. And I'd like to keep seeing that ball moving and get our kids at a hundred percent. Because I think we all know that our poverty level is very high in our community. And our first step out of that poverty is through education, and that's getting a high school diploma.
Okay, Jordan, same question.
My name's Jordan Liptonauer. I moved here with my husband and my stepson in 2019. We had our daughter in 2021. We have been invested in this community since we moved here. I am very excited about a lot of the progress that the district has made in a lot of areas. And I think that I have a lot to contribute to continuing that progress with the district. I have my sophomore who's experiencing those career pathway education options within the district. And then I've got a preschooler who's in those early childhood education programs. And I just see the benefit for both of those to continue within our district. And I see the value in investing in that, not only from an economic standpoint, but from my own time within our community. So, whatever I can do to support those things.
Mimi, same question.
Okay, my name is Mimi, and my husband and I have lived here about twenty years almost. I worked at Main Street Dental for about eighteen of those years, and my husband has worked at Wolf Creek for about fifteen. We have two kids. Kayden just graduated last year. He is a freshman at K-State. He goes to the Gardner campus, and he's in their aviation program. And Alexa is my, she's a sophomore. She's active in basketball, soccer, very active in our church, FCA, Renaissance. She loves Renaissance. That's a great thing our school has. That is very exciting. But like many of you, I have, in education, this town has impacted our lives every day. So, my kids have spent time at Sacred Heart, Garfield, Sunflower, the middle school, the high schools. So, I feel like I have a very broad experience at all schools. I think we have amazing teachers that show up every day for our kids, and we value them very much. I do think this culture that we live in right now, you've, politics can find its way into our classroom. So, it's really important to me that our teachers teach our kids how to think and just not what to think. So then they can, you know, decipher themselves what they think. I don't think we need any agendas in the classroom. I think, like she said, our CTE programs are phenomenal. I mean, I have a girl I work with whose son is in the welding. It costs him ten dollars to do that. And if he did that outside of high school, it would be about three thousand a semester. So, the value of those programs are pretty good. And so, definitely think those impact our kids and our community.
Okay, well, thank you all. The next question, we'll start with Jordan. And the question reads as this, and you'll have ninety seconds to answer. The school board has discussed recently keeping the budget revenue neutral, meaning that the district will be allowed to spend no more than the same amount as the previous year. In light of decreasing enrollment, what activities or programs may need to be cut? And where, or where would you find cost savings to allow the school district to be revenue neutral?
Oh, this is, this is a tough question for our district. I've been paying attention to the school board meetings, and we've had a couple of school board members make a very valid point of it all adds up to having successful members in our society. So, if you cut from the sports programs, if you cut from arts, if you cut from any of those programs, you're looking at a potential negative effect for some of our students. That's a really hard choice, and you have to look at all of the options on the table. Unfortunately, that does mean that some of your extracurriculars may be the first option to look at when you look at funding and what you receive reimbursement for from state or federal programs. So, I would probably start looking at areas like that where we don't have a lot of reimbursement opportunities. And that's a hard choice because we know that kids being involved in extracurriculars means that they're more involved in school across the board and that they're more successful. But if you're gonna make that choice, you have to make the hard choices too.
Good, thank you. Mimi?
Yes, um, yes, I am one of the school board members that voted to remain revenue neutral. I feel like I represent this community, and that is the majority of what I hear is that it's very important to people. So, I think it is our job to at least try. It is a hard conversation. We had one Monday. You can tune in and listen. It is not an easy decision, and I don't think, I think saying you're gonna cut teachers, you're gonna cut sports, or any of that is extreme. I think trimming back on a little bit of everything goes a long way. Somebody said, you know, it's just like twelve dollars in our pocket, coming out of our pockets per month. And it's more than that because it's twelve dollars every year, or, you know, and then it adds up. And twelve dollars from the city, twelve dollars from the county, twelve dollars from the school board. I don't want to cut anything. I want our kids to continue to have all the resources that they can. And I don't think we have to sacrifice. I think we just have to be smart, live within our means mentality, and just be smart with our taxpayers' dollars. And I think that, I think as a community, I, from what I hear is just please try. Just try to hear us and not just vote to spend more money without having it validated. Because I think your money's important, and I know mine is, and it is definitely something every household struggles with.
Oops, I went over.
Chris, same question.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The school board has discussed recently keeping the budget revenue neutral, meaning that being allowed to spend no more than the same amount as the previous year. In light of declining enrollments, what activities or programs may need to be cut? Or where would you find cost savings to allow the school district to be revenue neutral?
I think anybody that wants to watch some past meetings, I was one that voted to exceed. And I will defend that position that I don't think our students and our future of our community should be punished for the situation we're all in right now with the economy. To keep the ball moving, I am willing to, I guess, make that tough decision and make that vote to exceed. I think any place that we could maybe save some money is capital. As we all know, we've passed some recent bond issues. So, our facilities are in pretty decent shape. We do a very good job of having a revolving maintenance schedule that we keep those buildings up. But trying to cut activities and stuff, I, studies are out there that show kids that are active in whatever activity, choose sports, drama, music band, any of those things. Study shows that they do well or do better in school. And I just, I don't want to cut back, whether it's twelve dollars, fifteen dollars a month. I, I feel that is money well spent to keep the ball moving and to keep us moving forward, getting our kids educated properly.
Thank you. The next question is a sixty-second question, and it reads as follows. What sets you apart, and we'll start with Mimi. What sets you apart from the other candidates, and why should a constituent vote for you?
Okay, I, I think these are both great candidates. I've known Chris a long time. I just met Jordan tonight. We had a great conversation. And I spoke with her, and I think they both have great visions for our community. I have a deep care for our kids and our teachers. I would say a majority of the teachers I consider really good friends. I think they very, very much value our children. And so, I, as my kids were pre-K till now, you'll see me in the schools showing them that. I try to show up and check in with them. Ms. Winger was Kayden's fifth grade teacher, and I made sure she knew, you know, he's gonna follow your rules if he knows them clearly. And she's like, that was so helpful. So, I think just connecting with the teachers, I, I do that, and I want to invest in them. And as far as for you guys, the community, I want to hear what you think. I want to be here to listen to you, and if you have ideas or criticism, whatever you've got, I want to hear it, and I want to be your voice at the table.
Chris, same question.
First, I, I don't think I'm better than any of the other candidates. I think we all wake up every morning and tie our shoes the exact same way. I think some things that I do bring, I have been all over the spectrum of understanding being at the highest point in life and being at the lowest point in life. So therefore, I think I can relate to some of our, our student population that struggles. I have experienced some of those struggles. So, that's why I think maybe sometimes I go really to bat and stick my neck out there to make these votes that maybe aren't the popular vote to make sure we support everybody from top to bottom. So, but like I said, I, I am no way better than any of these candidates. I respect all of them, so.
Good, thank you, Chris. Jordan?
I'm gonna ask you to repeat the question one more time.
What sets you apart from the other candidates, and why should a constituent vote for you?
So, I think I have a lot of empathy to offer for this district, for everybody, for our community, for our students, for our teachers. I want to make sure that everybody is feeling like they are being invested in, that our community feels that they have investment by way of our future generations for this community, right? That our teachers are feeling supported and invested in when it comes to their salary and their benefits, and that our students are feeling like they're invested in for their futures and their future successes. So, I think my empathy brings a lot to the table. My professional experience looking into state and federal regulations brings a lot to the table. I am pretty passionate about making informed choices. I want to hear all sides. I want to hear the pros and cons. I want to hear the breakdown of it. So, I promise to make informed choices. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is also a sixty-second question, and it reads, what do you believe are the greatest strength and greatest challenge for the USD two ninety? And, and what are the top issues that need to be addressed? We'll start with you, Chris.
I think our greatest strength is we have a village, whether that is staff, administration, and the people in this room, the community. All you have to do is look at Facebook and see how this community rallies the wagons whenever there's a need in this community. I, can you repeat the last part of the question?
That's your, what are the top issues that need to be addressed?
Top issues is trying to figure out how we get our student population growing again. I have talked to Dr. Cobb's about trying to find some studies to see what our population is, how it's growing, are anybody having new children, are those children staying in our district? And what we need to do if they are not to how to keep them, and then how to attract. I think we gotta get creative and start figuring out how to promote ourselves, almost advertising like in this market nowadays.
Jordan?
I have to agree. The community in Ottawa is fantastic. Coming from a small-town community, it's really great to see the support that the community offers for everybody, whether they're students, whether it's just community members, whatever that looks like. I think on the school board meeting on Monday, they talked about the pride that people had based on the elementary school districts that you, or schools that you went to. And I just think that's something to be really proud of. I also see that enrollment is one of the struggles that we are going to have to overcome as a district. And connected to funding, those two things are gonna be tied together for our future. And I would really love to see partnering with the city to, as Chris said, what, what can we do to bring those young families to the community? What can we be offering those families? What are we going to do as a community? Again, that's what we love about ourselves, right? What are we doing as a community to bring more community to us?
Okay, Mimi?
Our biggest strength, I think, is probably our, the teachers and our students. We have great teachers, great students, and great programs for our students. The robotics club came and talked to us one day, and they're, they're some really cool kids. They're gonna have bright futures, like they're smart and very innovative. So, like Ms. Steinball, what she's done with that is just phenomenal. Our teachers are truly invested in our kids extremely, and our kids are just really cool people. So, if you're ever out of it, you know, go talk to them because they're really got a lot to share with you. But unfortunately, our, you know, challenges is our numbers. Our numbers keep going down. And so, I do think we have to jump in and figure out why and how we can make that grow. You know, young families aren't moving here, and I don't know why, or they're just not having as many kids. We need to somehow encourage families and kids to come here and for this community to grow because it is a great community.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind the audience that if you have any questions that, that you would like to ask these candidates in, in general, please raise your hand, and we'll get a note card to you so that you can write down your question for, for. Oh, oh, we can take those down.
My name's Mimi.
Oh, okay.
I'm kind of short.
Is that better? Okay, alright. The next three questions are gonna be ninety-second questions, and the read is follows. What do you see as the role of an Ottawa school board member? And we'll start with you, Jordan.
I think our school board member's role is to support our teachers and support our students, to support our community in the decisions that we make for our community members, whether that's the teachers live in our community, whether that's the students that are participating at our schools. Our role is to make sure that we are then taking, the school board's role is to take state and federal laws and regulations and figure out how those can be best implemented into our communities and how we are going to see the impact in our communities. So, we're kind of the middle management role for that, right? We take all of those rules and regulations and guidance that we're getting from these other entities, and we figure out how we're gonna implement it in for our community and how it's gonna best fit our students and our teachers, and how we can make that a cohesive thing for them.
Okay, Mimi?
I think my role is, you know, I'm elected by you, so I, I am your voice. I am representing you, the community, whether, you know, whether you're, whatever your view is, bring it to me because I represent you. That's, that's my role. Another role, you know, beyond that is, it's not to micromanage anything. I think the board, you know, helps support and put people in place to make decisions and, you know, run the school. So, I don't think it's a, to micromanage any teacher or administrator. It's more there to be a voice for the community. I do think, I, as a school board member, I want to keep education simple and common sense approach to education. I want to be responsible with, for your, you know, tax dollars. I want to be a support for our teachers. You know, when they need resources, that's why we're here, is to hear those things and provide them encouragement, all the above.
Chris, same question.
I think role as school board member, first and foremost, is to be an advocate and a champion of the district and the whole. And then, you know, we are, as Mimi has said, we're not to micromanage. We're honestly only in charge of one person, and that's Dr. Cobb's. And it's to help support him and make sure he can make the decisions and has the tools that he needs to do his job. But I, I think the biggest thing is just being a champion and doing what it takes to support this district and help keep him moving us forward.
Okay. Alright, the next question is, and we'll start with you, Mimi, in ninety-second, if you need it for, for your answer. What are your views on school vouchers?
School vouchers, like, we get them for, like, explain what that means, I guess.
It'd be, the parents would be able to select who they, where their kids go to.
Yeah, I think parents have the right for their kids to go to school and be taught at home, wherever they feel. I do think that USD two ninety is very good about giving parents a voice, so I think we provide that. They can always opt out of something they don't agree on, so I think we do provide that safe environment. But I do think parents should have that freedom to send their kids wherever they feel they need to go. I don't think we should be telling them if they went to homeschool their kids that, you know, and they think that's the best place for them. I think our job is just to provide the best public education we can with parents, you know, having a voice in their child's education.
Chris?
School vouchers, that's kind of a, I think, a touchy one for all of us. I, I will echo what Mimi says. I don't think, as a parent myself, that I should be told where my kid needs to get educated. I will say, as we talked earlier about some of these questions, with declining enrollment, I wonder what studies are out there where this starts to play into our declining enrollment. I, I think of it as when you don't have the pride and everything that goes with having your hometown public school. It's kind of like a, an old small town when they lose a bank. The bank kind of dies, and the community kind of goes with it. So, I don't know. That's really touchy with the vouchers. I know there's everybody that's on both sides of the fence. But I definitely don't condemn anybody for trying to take their kids somewhere else if that's where they feel they need to be. It just complicates this question that we had earlier of how we handle declining enrollment with vouchers going around too.
Thank you. Jordan, same question.
So, maybe I have a different understanding about the voucher program. I, I agree that as parents, we have a right to choose where our child is getting, where our children are getting their education, whether that's a private or public school. I think that's our choice. I don't think the voucher programs change anything about that, except maybe deter funding from public schools to private options. And I have not seen a voucher program or a voucher system that I really think benefits public education when we talk about those students still needing that funding. If you, my understanding of the voucher programs that have been suggested through the states is that it can have detrimental effects, not just in enrollment numbers, but when it comes to funding our schools. So, it would be something that you would really have to look into and see how that's going to affect our school district. I would say public funding needs to stay public, and it needs to continue to go to our public schools. And as private citizens, you have the option to choose a private option, but that doesn't mean that you get a discount for that, so.
Thank you. And the next question is, how would you specifically support elective and special programs such as the arts? and special programs such as the arts, clubs, and special education? And we'll start with you. Let's see, we started with Chris last time, or?
It was me.
With Mimi, okay. How would you specifically, specifically support elective and special programs such as the arts, clubs, and special education?
I think we've already done that. And no offense to Jordan, she's not on the school board yet. But we have done a pretty good job of that. I think it was just in the last year or two, we have bought our band all new uniforms through this bond issue. In the arts, we have the Performing Arts Center, which is a great facility. The kids put on some top notch plays and and our band and choir are great. They do some amazing things at the state level. We just have, I think, echo what Mimi said earlier, we have some amazing students in our district. But I think we're already doing a pretty good job of supporting the arts and the electives. I think Mimi talked about our robotics earlier. That's kind of a newer club and those guys are just knocking it out of the park. And that's just an example of one. There's many other ones that are doing amazing things.
Jordan, same question.
So I, that is something that I actually think the district does a very good job of finding a good balance in supporting our arts and extracurricular activities. So I would just hope to continue the progress that they're making and making sure that as long as we are funding certain programs, whether it's sports or arts, that all the programs are receiving that same attention. Special education, I believe, was mentioned in that and making sure that, again, that is still one of our top priorities, especially as we, again, funding, see some hurdles come up for that. So making sure that we take that account, take that into account in our budgeting, that some of that funding may be more fluid from state or federal level and we may need to make accommodations for it in other areas. And that's something that'll need to be taken into consideration at budget time for those programs. And I, I think they're all important. They all deserve high priority. Whatever we can do to keep those systems and those programs in place is what I will support.
Mimi, same question.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we do a good job supporting those. I think they're very important to support. All our clubs, like, kids should be involved in as many things as they can in high school, middle school. It helps you find your people. It helps you find your purpose. You know, there is a club and an activity probably for about anybody. So if you're a, you know, outward person, Renaissance is a great place because they kind of lead the team, the school in team spirit. There's other clubs, you know, if you're more of an introvert, there's one for you too. But our special ed, I think, you know, they'll take, I think they deserve all the help, like any help they can get, they deserve all of it. So the need in special ed continues to grow. And it's wearing on, you know, if you work in that, it's, it's a lot. And our special ed teachers are patient, kind, and really care about those kids. But I do think they could use, I don't know if there's a amount of help that they don't, wouldn't turn down because just the more help they have, the more they can do. With music band, I don't know if you've ever been to a football game or a basketball game, but our band is pretty cool. They are, they lead our team. I mean, our kids even cheer with our cheerleaders now. They know all the cheers to the cheers, so.
Well, thank you. Jordan, the next question, and I believe, were we at 90 seconds? Is how important is it to be a team player while serving on the school board?
I, it's the most important. We have a lot of different opinions. We have a lot of different backgrounds. We have a lot of different communities to consider, our students, the community itself, our teachers. Being a team player means you have to put your pride to the side sometimes. You may have to admit you're wrong. You may have to admit that you went to bat for the wrong thing and now you have to eat some crow. But it also means that you stick to it if you believe that you have a cause that's going to benefit the community you're working for. So I think it's important for the school board to be willing to listen to all of the sides, to research what's going to be best for the community. And all of that takes teamwork. All of it is going to require some amount of coming together and working together.
Mimi?
Yes, like Jordan said, it's, it is the most important thing, probably because you are a team and you're helping guide the community with the school. So there are certain things I think the school board does, you know, stand shoulder to shoulder on. And that is supporting our kids and our teachers, our administration, I mean, and, you know, you guys as a community. But you do have to kind of support each other and listen, listening to each other. And with an open mind, because, you know, different people bring different life experiences to the table and can provide just a different insight of what, you know, you might be discussing. And some people, you know, think outside the box and some people, you know, are really rigid inside there. So it's good just to have that open mind as it, as you are a team. And you have to stand together as a team, you know, regardless of the decision made, you know, you're a team and you came to that decision as a team. So supporting each other during school board meetings and outside of the school board meetings is important as well.
Okay, Chris?
Being a team player, as my two fellow people to the right of me here have said, is very, very important. I was sitting here thinking about the question. One of the things I think of is, over the years, there's a lot of times we get agendas before the meetings and I think, oh, I've already made up my mind on something. And then I hear the rest of my fellow school board members, the other six speak. And there's been numerous times that my opinion has changed when I hear it from a different standpoint. So that, that's part of being a team player. I always say, you know, when somebody's like, oh, well, you're on school board, you can do this. Well, no, I'm one of seven. So there's a team of us and not one of us controls the school board, so.
Good. Well, thank you. That is the end of our questions that we have this evening. So I'm going to give each of you two minutes if you would like, and we will just give you a chance to, to wrap up or address anything that we may have missed. And let's see, we're starting with Mimi.
I think it's me. To wrap up, I just want you to express, you know, my love for our teachers, our kids, our community. And that I want to bring a, like a thoughtful common sense approach to representing you on our school board. I did join the school board about two years ago. I was appointed, I took Kelly Graves' spot after she passed away. And, you know, I wanted to, you know, represent her a little bit with my presence there too. I don't know if you knew her, but she was a great person. But I just feel like I'm getting my, I just got my feet wet. So it is a lot. It is a big task. And there's a lot more involved than even I knew coming into that two years ago. So I feel like I am still learning and it is definitely something that I care deeply about. And I care deeply about, you know, our community. So I, like I said, I want to be your voice at the table. So feel free to reach out anytime. I think that's about it.
Chris?
Kind of wrap up, I, I think I just want to say, and I think a lot of people know since I've been on school board for a little while, there's some people that I see out here in this room that have approached me. So I like to think that I'm approachable. I'll hear people out. I try to, as best as I can, respond to every email if we receive one. Sometimes that's hard. But I at least try to at least thank them for taking the time to write whatever email it is they've sent, whether it's a concern or an accolade or something negative. And the other thing is, I, I feel like I try to hear everybody. I always say my kind of approach is I like to throw the biggest net that catches the most fish that benefits as many as possible. And sometimes that comes with unpopular decisions. That's not the decision that everybody likes, so. That, that's, I guess, what I would, would say is I, I'm approachable and anybody can reach out to me and approach me in public. And I think there are several people in this room right now that have done that as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Jordan?
Yeah, so being kind of the newbie up here between our two respected school board members, just putting it out there, again, I'm for the community for investing in our students, investing in our teachers, supporting the teachers, that they know what's going on in their classrooms and they're the ones that are the most educated to make the choices for what's going on in their classrooms, that they will partner with the school board and, and we learn from them as much as they learn from us. And that's all about us coming together as a community, so supporting our teachers, supporting, making sure that we have funds available to continue all of the programs that we want to continue investing in for our students and making sure we continue to have those opportunities available for them. And just making myself available to feedback. If I were to be elected to the school board, I agree that having that accountability is a huge part of representing the community, representing our students and the school board as a whole is being accountable for the decisions that are made and being open to having those conversations with the community, especially as we look at having to make some harder choices in future years.
Well, thank you all three candidates for, for coming this evening and answering the questions. As, as
I really wanted to do.
As most of you do know, that we have four candidates running for three positions on the school board. There are three, four-year positions that will be, be elected and you'll have an opportunity to vote for, for three candidates out of the four. So thank you very much. The general election is on Tuesday, November 4th. At this point, we will have a short recess and reconvene at 7:15 with the, the City of Ottawa Commission candidates. Everyone, if you can please make it to your seats and, so that we can start this, the city commission candidates portion of the, of the forum. Okay, welcome back, folks. We're now going to transition into the city commission candidates portion of the, the forum this evening. And I'm going to give each of you two minutes to start out, to introduce yourselves and tell us why you're running for the, the City of Ottawa City Commission. And we'll start with you, Mike.
Sure, Mike Skidmore. I live here in Ottawa, of course. I guess we have to, don't we? That's good. That's good news. I, I guess to say why I'm running again, I I guess uh to say why I'm running again, uh I know it's a canned answer to say something to the effect of unfinished business. And but in some ways it it that is true, uh I'm excited about our our housing program. We've got a neighborhood revitalization program, it's been very successful where people get tax breaks for either building a new home or or remodeling a home. Within certain areas of our community where it needs to be done. And we've had almost a record number of permits in the last couple of years here, so I'm glad to see some infill coming in. We also have the subdivision out by K F R radio, uh forty plus homes out there. Uh first phase, about half of those are being built and you probably drive by and see those and it's good to see those uh homes being built. So I'm excited about our our housing prospects, that's one of the larger areas areas where we needed a lot of help. And uh we're finally got the ball rolling, I just want to keep it moving. Childcare is kind of goes along with the housing and the in the employment situation we have here in town. Uh if we don't have good childcare or sufficient childcare, uh the workers can't can't uh take the jobs. And so that's one of the concerns too we have along with the housing is childcare. But also I do, I want to point out proximity park is a really big issue and uh I'm I'm really excited about the prospects of that going through. We've got, we had a little hiccup this summer uh with some legislation, the Kansas Department, Kansas uh legislature. And they basically had some, put some restrictions on self-generation. And so we're trying to work with them, work around that to make that happen still, uh we're still, we're still on the on the block. We still got the contract with the Life Field Energy and I'm confident that'll come through, but that'll be a big boost to our economy, uh to our tax base. And to the employment as well, so I'm excited about that, but uh those are some ma- major issues anyway that I'm looking for and hope to continue with.
Thank you, Mike, uh Brian?
Uh my name is Brian Kane and I'm running for city commission, uh more because I believe in giving back to the community where I live. And I've done that throughout the twenty years that I've been here, uh serving twelve and a half years on the school board. Uh the last four years I think it's been on the planning commission. And so for me, uh I want to continue building upon the great things that. Our community has done over the last twenty years that I've been here. You know, Mike mentioned housing, uh we've got some great projects on the on the horizon uh that are. Hopefully gonna be pushed through here uh in the next calendar year, if not sooner. But I also believe that uh we have a great community and in order to have a great community, we have to have great leaders. Who are willing to listen to the public and take their input. Even if it's something we don't agree with, uh I think it's important to listen to all sides. And so uh I do want to be that that person that you can come to and say, hey, have we considered this? And uh that's, that's why I want to run, that's why I want to be on the city commission, so that I can be a voice for those who feel like they don't get heard. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Emily?
Yeah, it's been a whole eight hours or so since I've been in this seat, so you know, it's still warm from the last time I was in it. But I'm Emily Allen, I had ran before as Emily Graves and uh got my term, so there was a name change there, not to confuse anyone. I uh currently serve as your mayor, so that's why I'm used to this seat. Brian said I couldn't sit here and I said it literally has my name on it most of the time, so um I lived in Ottawa for eighteen years. I have two kids, five bonus kids, a dog, two cats, so I live in chaos. Um and I can deal well with chaos and so um I also have a full-time job, I work for Garmin. I started becoming involved many years ago, uh serving on different boards to try to improve the community. I found that, yeah, I served on the CASA Board, Community Schools, Play Task Force, all kinds of boards. But I felt like I wasn't making quite the impact that I wanted to make and uh so I decided to run uh for city commission at that time. I was elected um and I've actually served, I started ten years ago, took a little bit of a break when I moved outside of city limits. Moved back in, ran for reelection, got a four-year term and that brings me to now. So uh again, I currently serve as your mayor, my children were my inspiration to run though. Selfishly, I want them to live here forever and um so whatever that takes to get them to stay here. Are a lot of the same things that we want, right? We want jobs, we want housing, we want the amenities, we want beautiful parks and things that draw people in. So I really wanted to make an impact on those things where um it's a community where everyone wants to stay. No one wants to move out or move away to college, they just want to go here and live here forever. So that is why I initially ran and what keeps me going.
Thank you, uh Gary, your turn.
My name is Gary Harris, I was lifelong Franklin County resident, I was raised in Williamsburg. Uh my wife and I just celebrated our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary, uh we've lived here in Ottawa for twenty-three years. Got two sons, twenty-three and seventeen, we're very proud of. I served on the Williamsburg City Council for two terms in the early, in the nineties and early two thousands. I was a volunteer firefighter for sixteen years out there. Been a member of the Franklin County Area Landlords Group since nineteen ninety-nine, I'm currently serving as president of that. I'm, I've been on the uh Ottawa Board of Zoning Appeals and currently serving on the Planning Commission here in Ottawa. Public service is very important, everybody should, everybody should serve on a public board at some point in time in their lives or another. It helps you understand why some decisions are made, whether you necessarily agree with them or not. My wife and I run three successful businesses, um I've got a pretty good handle on money management. And employee management and retaining quality employees. Quality employees are critical to the successful operation of our city and we need to focus on keeping the quality ones we've got.
Yeah, thank you, uh Tim?
Yes, my name's Tim Van Leighton, I'm a lifelong Ottawa resident and I was born and raised here, went to all the schools here. Graduated from the high school, I've managed several businesses, had a downtown business. Uh started several businesses around town that have all been successful and uh. You know, I just feel like even when I had the downtown business, like everybody else says, you need to give back to your community, you can't expect your community to do everything for you. If you're not willing to help out and give back to that community, so uh I've recently sold my business and kind of retired. And um I've been on lots of boards and I don't really have a whole lot of those going right now, so I thought, you know, this might be a good time to. To run for city commission and, you know, everybody is worried about taxes, like so am I, you know, and. You know, I've usually been a pretty good steward of money uh and retaining employees, like Gary said and just, you know, I feel like. You know, I can add something to the the uh commission by being a a business owner and looking at things maybe in a little different light. Than some people look at them, so my wife and I have been married for, I don't know how long, forty-three years. I got one son, he actually works for the City of Ottawa, so you know, he lives here in Ottawa. You know, he was raised here in Ottawa and I'm hoping he stays here in Ottawa and my granddaughter is laughing, moved to Manhattan. So maybe we can improve things enough, she'll move back here, so anyway, that's pretty much why I'm running.
Thank you, Tim, and the next question is gonna be a quick question, thirty seconds and um. Uh very quickly and we'll start with you, Brian, um do you have a library card? And if not, why not?
I have a library card, my wife has a library card, both my kids have a library card, so yeah, we appreciate the library.
Okay, Emily?
Yes, I have a library card, I visit often and um really like checking out books online. So that way I can just sneak down there and grab them and go rather than wandering around, but I do have library cards and so do our kids.
Gary?
No, I do not have a library card, I've got a very good library at home though, which I enjoy reading when I have time.
Jim?
No, I do not have a library card, uh I do have quite a few books at home, but I find that at my age. It's a lot easier to download books on Audible and listen to them on my phone.
Okay, thank you, Tim, and Mike?
Yeah, I've got one and actually it has a metal plate on it, uh is that still useful, Tom? Is that, okay, that's that's mine. But uh that's how old that one is, but no, but uh I'm kind of only saying like, we've got a library at home, we've got quite a few books, shelves and shelves of books right now at home. So that's where my library card is actually.
Okay, thank you, the next question will be a uh a two-minute question and we'll start with you, Emily. A key issue uh facing Ottawa this year is pertaining to the sunsetting of the one-cent sales tax. It's a two-part question, um do you feel like the half-cent sales tax was used as it was supposed to be? And uh do you think this is a valuable taxing tool? Why or why not?
Absolutely, that's a good question, um I do think the half-cent was used as intended. It did uh develop that uh develop proximity park as intended, um got infrastructure out there which also opened up. I think the number is somewhere around potentially sixteen hundred other acres, so I do think that was definitely used as intended. But now, uh as you mentioned, it's sunsetting, the time is up and so looking at renewing, we're not looking at raising taxes. We're looking at uh potentially renewing that tax, um moving forward. Um as a, as a means of taxing, I do think it is a great uh workaround to not raising property taxes. It would, um I actually got a little uh flyer in the mail today and I'm sure a lot of you did as well. But it says um that over the past ten years, it saved um a thirty points. Zero six million reduction in property taxes, so that money is raised by that tax. And so that would have been money had they decided to use uh property taxes for a funding mechanism for proximity park. That would have been the amount, so I do feel like this would be a good um way to tax people. That would spread it out um amongst the public, it wouldn't be um just people who live here, it would be people driving by, it would be people coming to town to eat dinner. Which spreads out that tax burden a little bit, so I I do feel like it would uh definite, definitely be useful. And it's a good way to go about getting funds for those specific needs, again on the ballot. It specifically outlines what we would use it for, um just so everybody knows and that is the intent of that tax. So it wouldn't be just going into some random fund and sitting there and gaining interest, it would be used for those items, so.
Okay, thank you, uh Gary?
Whether you agree with it or not, I do believe it was used for what it was intended. As far as keeping it, I think as Emily said, it's a really good way to generate more revenue. That's not just on the backs of the community taxpayers. Everybody that drives through, traveling through from on I thirty-five, uh stops and gets gas, stops to eat. Every, everybody that comes through town, everybody that shops at Walmart or wherever, everybody that does business with a business here in the community. Is contributing to it, so it helps keep the burden off the. Property owners that pay the taxes here in town, it it's a, it's a great support for that.
Okay, thank you, Tim?
Yeah, I too am in favor of of remain retaining the the one penny sales tax. I believe it didn't when it's, we already had the half-cent sales tax in place ten years ago, right? And then we just increased it by another half cent, which I believe was used in proximity park, get all the infrastructure in and everything. You know, some of the other intended uses, you know, uh I can't speak to that, cause I haven't been on the commission. But I I believe it was probably used for what they were intended to use for. You know, there are a lot of things that they talk about using it in the future that, you know, I don't know where the money. You know, came from for that in the previously, but the sales tax does spread that burden across everybody. So you get everybody from Anderson and Osage County that shop at Price Chopper and Walmart. And yeah, all the travelers coming through town that buy gas and go down and eat, they're helping with that tax burden. Instead of taking that thirty million dollars and just, yeah, putting it back onto the property owner, which, you know, you will notice an increase in property taxes. And you know, the goal is to to maintain the property taxes where they are or or get them lowered. But without that penny, I feel you probably are gonna get an increase and seriously, how, are you gonna notice a penny? I mean, a penny on a dollar, a dime on, you know, you have to spend a whole lot of money to actually notice that you were saving anything. On that that penny sales tax and you're currently paying it already, it's not gonna be anything new or extra, so.
Thank you, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, uh Mike?
Yeah, they, they, well, they started up with a half-cent a long time ago, I know that was in place to help relieve some property taxes. Then ten years ago, we added the half-cent for proximity park, so it is a one total one percent that we're looking to renew. And again, there's no increase on the tax and and so that's what I appreciate, we're holding the line there. We've got, our grandkids are in Oregon, we just were back there to visit them and and they're those parents that are raising them, of course. And uh they have no sales tax in Oregon, it's very interesting, you go in there, buy something for three ninety-eight, it's three ninety-eight. Now, their property taxes are pretty high, cause they got a comp, and their income taxes are high, so they got to compensate for that. So I've seen where it's happening, where they they don't have any sales tax. And then what I like about our sales taxes, yes, the out-of-towners, passersby help contribute toward that. And we've run, done some studies that indicate close to thirty percent of our sales tax comes from out-of-towners. And so I'm thinking, well, if we need money, hopefully we're gonna be able to build a pool someday. I love that the idea of the out-of-town people are helping pay thirty percent of our pool, that's gonna be several million-dollar project, millions. I don't, we don't know the total numbers, but that's a lot of money to replace a pool. And we do need to replace this pool, of course, I believe, cause the pool is about sixty years old, I believe, built in the sixties. I still call it the new pool, cause I remember the one before that, it's not the new pool, I guess, they are correct me here sometimes. But anyway, we do need that product, this the sales tax to continue on and or not only uh proximity park, which we're about to be paid off. I think the collection on the sales tax we've had so far for proximity park that we have in our account is almost enough to pay off the debt that we have. What's in much left on that proximity park and by the time we get it sold, it will certainly be pay off any leftover debt. But I think it's gonna be a good opportunity for us, hopefully it will pass, it seems to be sometimes other cities we've talked to, if it's a continuation of the sales tax. It usually has a good success, if it's an increase, not so much, so I think we're gonna have some success here. I hope anyway, everybody gets out and vote and uh pass that continuation of our sales tax.
Good, thank you, uh Brian?
You know, uh yeah, I echo pretty much what everybody said, the one-cent sales tax oddly enough. Generates roughly the equivalent of a twenty-six mils on property tax. And I don't know about you, but I don't want my property taxes to go up another twenty-six mils. I pay quite a bit already on a house that I only paid a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for. So uh the half-cent sale tax for proximity park was a good thing out there to get all that infrastructure done. I'm excited to see it get sold in December, hopefully. Uh renewing the sun, one-cent sales tax, I think is a benefit to our community because it is gonna go towards uh things that we want to see. The half-cent sales tax uh that was used for proximity park is gonna be earmarked for special projects. Like a new pool, like Mike said. And the other half-cent is gonna go into the general operating budget, which will then hopefully generate enough funds to start working on some of our street issues. Because we have a lot of issues with our streets and I'm sure we all know that. You don't have to drive very far from this building to know that, so um I I'm fully supportive of continuing the one-cent sales tax. Cause like Tim said, you put a pile of a hundred pennies in front of you, you're not gonna notice one missing, so. That's why I got to say about that.
Okay, thank you, uh Brian, uh this segues into the next question. And we'll start with you, Gary, and it'll be a uh uh two-minute question. And uh many streets in Ottawa are badly in need of repair, including unpaved streets, brick streets. And some arter- arterials like uh West Twenty-third Street, uh should, should streets in Ottawa be a higher priority?
Absolutely.
Is that it? Okay, great, yeah, all right, so, Tim?
Yeah, I think the streets need to be a pretty high priority, I uh I do work delivering prescriptions for creamers one afternoon a week. And driving around town, I can tell you, we got some pretty bad streets. You know, I like the the nostalgia of the old brick streets, but man, some of them are horrible to drive on, I don't know what the answer to that is. And I don't know what's happened somewhere along the line, but the streets need to be a priority and then they need to be maintained. So we don't get into this, this same thing, five or ten years down the road where all of a sudden the streets are all horrible again. And now we're trying to figure out how we're gonna pay to, to have them all brought back up to, to a good standard. So I guess, yeah, the short of it is, yes, I feel like the streets need to be a high priority.
Okay, thank you, Mike?
Yes, indeed, I I agree, I uh I appreciate our city staff, uh recently put on a um a site. Where you can go and report potholes, you know, we can't possibly get over, I think we've got close to a hundred miles of streets here in town. And I appreciate that if you see a pothole, you can report to City Hall and they'll get to it when they can, it can't necessarily be the next day, but it is dealt with. And I've had done that myself, I've reported it, they didn't know who I was, reported it and then it got fixed a couple of days later. So uh they're very responsive with the pothole repairs, in fact, we think we've set almost a record on the pothole repairs. So, uh, they're very responsive with the pothole repairs. In fact, we think we've set almost a record on the pothole repairs this last year uh, with how many tons of asphalt we've used, but we've been putting a lot out there. So, uh, if you missed, if one didn't get fixed for some, for some reason, please report to City Hall. You gotta re, that line online to be able to report that. We do have a lot of brick streets in town and that's a dilemma. Uh, some of the people want the brick streets. Some people want the leaving like that. It's very traditional. I get it. I used to live on a brick street. I remember coming back home one time and they paved over it and it was just needed to be done, I guess. Some of them have to be done. And, uh, to totally replace the brick streets, very costly. Uh, we did a study recently where if we were to work on every single street in town, it's gonna cost fifty to seventy million dollars. And we just didn't have that kind of money in the world. We didn't wanna borrow that kind of money to fix every street the way it should be. And I'm talking curbs and gutters as well on that. So we do have to be very cognizant of the cost on that. I often think about my econ classes. They talk about, uh, money with the judicious allocation of limited resources. And it's kinda what we do here at City Hall. We have the judicious allocation of limited resources and we do that every day. And that's something that we look at it on streets as well to be able to, to keep them up to speed. Yes, and we, maintenance is important. I think that's a good point someone brought up over here. Maybe not potholes, but maybe sections of the street. And that my, I got nine seconds, let me finish here. I see we're working on Cedar Street, for instance, uh, you'll see larger sections of the street being done too, not just potholes. I'm glad to see that done too.
Yeah, Brian?
Uh, you know, yes, streets absolutely should be a priority in our community. Um, it is our means of getting around town. Um, and, and like, uh, Commissioner Skidmore said, that brick streets are not cheap to uh, maintain or, uh, replace. Um, I think really the answer for brick streets, as much as we may love them for their nostalgia, um, I, I think they're a thing of the past. Um, because it's not easy to maintain them when they go crazy, like Ninth Street. Um, the pothole repairs, I think it's, I think this, uh, system they've got in place is great. Um, I think we should address the worst first. Um, and I think we should do a study to figure out which ones are the worst. Um, and, uh, cause I think each of us would have our opinions about which street is the worst. Um, my street, not the worst, so it's okay. Um, but I think we need to prioritize, um, our main thoroughfares. The places, you know, downtown, Cedar Street, Ash Street, Willow, are the ones that get us through town relatively quickly. Um, are the ones that we need to, uh, kinda address first, um, and then work our way east and west and the north and south. Um, there's a lot of street work to be, to be done in this town. So, um, that's a scary price tag that, uh, Commissioner Skidmore said. And, uh, it's gonna take a, a valiant effort on the city's part and the community's part to get this stuff done.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Emily?
Yeah, so my opinion is absolutely they need to be a higher priority, but, uh, most importantly, your opinion is that they need to be a higher priority. Um, you guys said so on the community survey that we had received, we had sent out to everybody. Everybody responded that streets need to be a higher priority. So I think that really, um, obviously means that that's what you're seeing. That's what we need to take a look at. We do, um, have a streets plan and I know, um, we, uh, have had, uh, streets. I don't wanna call it an inventory. We know our streets, but, um, kind of a grading of how bad certain streets are. And so that has been amazing to look at and see exactly where the streets are that need repaired, need worked on first. Um, and so that, that's invaluable information. I do know that they are putting together a plan to work on them. And as, uh, Commissioner Skidmore mentioned, there is a report of pothole uh, thing that people can go to. I would say for the brick streets, as you mentioned, um, I like the historic brick streets. And I actually was speaking at an OU event and someone came up and said, um, completely pulled me aside and said, um, I love the brick streets in town. It's a little slice of Americana and it felt really special. Um, but they do need to be better. They're, it's a disaster to drive down. And so I do think there, uh, we need to take a, like a historical approach, um, with historical department, you know, things like that to fix those and still keep their, um, integrity and their, um, history uh, as well. And, um, I would drive around with my daughter door dashing sometimes and we would report a pothole when we would see it. And that was a really good way to kind of find potholes where we wouldn't normally be driving. And usually it was right after my car went over it. And I'm like, oh my God, okay, we're fine. And there's no flat tire, but then we'd report it. So definitely that site works for now until we can get the bigger fix going.
Thank you, Emily. Uh, the next question will be a, uh, a sixty-second question and, uh, and we'll start with you, Tim. Um, be it, uh, disease, recent weather conditions, construction or other issues, many of the trees in our Tree City USA community are dead, dying or in poor condition. What should be done, if anything, to address this problem in the city's right, rights of way?
Man, that's a good question. Uh, you know, I don't know. I don't really have a good answer for that. You know, they need to be addressed. They need to be taken out of power lines. Obviously, we've had issues in the past with ice storms and, and winter storms. Um, I don't know if, if the city needs to take care of that or maybe contract somebody from outside to take care of the ones that need to be done. I probably need to look and see what is, uh, you know, would be the best use of money to get those problems taken care of and get the trees taken out or, or at least out of the lines that need to be.
Okay, Mike?
Well, it's a very timely question because just today we had our tree guy from the state of Kansas come and give us a report from back August when he spent about a week here looking over our tree inventory. And, uh, yeah, it's very interesting. He, he identified with his team about, uh, close to three hundred trees, I guess, that need to be completely removed. And maybe some of you have seen these. The problem is some of those are on people's, the terrace of a business, for instance. And it's technically, technically a responsibility of the homeowner to cut it down. Now, uh, we just received a grant as well, uh, from, uh, I'm not sure where that was from, but it was from a grant to helping us, uh, for us planting new trees in Forest Park. Because they did say there's some trees there that need to come down. So we got some replacement. They recommend two trees for every replacement of one tree. And, uh, that keeps the healthy canopy over our city. We are a Tree City USA. And it, with that, it comes the unfortunate trouble with the storm damage. But we did spend a lot more money on tree, um, maintenance and tree trimming to eliminate that problem this last year.
Uh, Brian?
If you drive down Cedar Street, there's about eighteen trees that need to come down. I counted them today. Uh, and every street's that way. Main Street from Seventh all the way up, trees that need to come down. Um, Ash Street, Willow Street, all these streets that I drive every day, I see trees that are dying that need to come down. Um, and it is interesting because I did listen to the commission meeting. Um, that he identified three hundred trees. Um, that's a, a pretty, pretty big undertaking to get those trees out. And if you imagine every tree deserves two trees planted, that's six hundred trees in the city of Ottawa being planted. So, uh, that would be a good thing. Um, some of these trees are on private property and are beholden to the property owner to maintain. Um, but it's not cheap to tear down a tree, especially a hundred-year-old tree.
Yeah, Emily?
Yeah, um, so the, the presentation today was really interesting because they did identify, I believe, I believe it was six thousand trees that we have in the town and it categorized them by good, fair, um, poor condition and then dead and dying. And, uh, they're gonna provide that information to us. So again, similar to how I mentioned with streets, we will be able to look at that map and say, this is where the large, uh, portion of the dying trees are and we can tackle that. Um, and we can view them, uh, they said you could even view it as street view. So we'll be able to view it as street view. Um, and really take a look at those trees without even having to go out there if you didn't want to. But, um, I do, um, the, the presentation was really interesting. I think we got a grant, the grant that Commissioner Skidmore mentioned, I believe was ninety-seven thousand dollars. And so that will cover the removal of some of the dead and dying trees in Forest Park, as well as plant some new. And I do know that crews have been prioritizing some of the tree limbs in the power lines. But a stop so it doesn't block.
Uh, Gary?
Well, it's pretty much an echo of what everybody said. Yes, we definitely do have a problem with them. Um, the tree study that they've done is, is a good first step to move forward with getting them taken care of. One of the things that the city's done in the past, and I've utilized it myself many times, and it's a huge asset when they have the storm damage, is the limb pickup. You get them out to the, out to the street and the city comes along and picks them up for you. Um, I've, I've utilized that several times and a couple of different times when I had more trimming that needed to be done. When I was cleaning up, I would call the city and say, hey, I've got more than need, more than just storm damage. Will you pick them up if I pile them out there with them? And they've, they've always been very, very good about that. So that's, you know, take advantage of the city's, city's programs that they already have in place and do what you can to help them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next question, we'll start with you, Mike, and, uh, it'll be a sixty-second question. Um, should the, uh, neighborhood revitalization program be, uh, continued, reorganized, changed, abolished? Your thoughts?
Yes. I, I, you know, it's been in place for a long time and we've really been benefited from that. I appreciate the commissioners from years ago that made these decisions. And then more than ten years later, these homes are, are fully on the tax rolls. Uh, sometimes I, I wonder though if it could be amended and we've talked about this a little bit. But right now, we've got, uh, a builder, let's say builds a home, it's in the program and it's a fully ninety-five percent tax rebate on the property. And the, and the person building the home will then can sell it to someone else and they can get that benefit as well. Of course, it ta- passes on to the new owner. Well, sometimes I wonder if the new owner, would they be still pay that same price for five years instead versus ten? Or is, or is it ten really what they're looking for? And sometimes I think maybe we're in giving away too much of the store and that's my concern. So they probably need to do some study, talk to some builders, I think, to see exactly where we're at. But I think it could be amended to benefit the taxpayers better.
Okay, uh, Brian?
Um, I do believe we should continue the neighborhood revitalization. It has allowed a lot of these, uh, these infill projects to, uh, take place. An infill lot is basically an empty lot where somebody has purchased and built a home. Um, and that completes a neighborhood and makes that empty lot uh, more profitable for somebody down the road. Um, I do think that there are changes that we could make. Um, I think if you sell the house, um, within that ten-year time period, then that tax abatement goes away. Um, the new owner should be paying property tax like everybody else. So that's what I believe.
Emily?
Um, I, I appreciate how it is. I do think it should be reviewed, just like any, uh, program that we have. There should be a period, um, of so long that we review it every so often. Um, it is a great partnership that we have with the county and the school district. Um, we all review the items that are submitted for that program. And then, um, that board of one county commissioner, one school district member and one, uh, city commissioner will sign off on those, um, as they approve them. And then they get submitted to the full city commission and we approve or deny. Uh, so I, I do see the value in that. I, it looks different in different communities. I actually spoke with somebody this last weekend about what it looks like in their community. They use more of a reimbursement model. Um, not saying that that's what we need, but it just looks different. So it is worth exploring and seeing what other communities do. Um, and what would work best for our community, um, to, to keep that program in place.
Thank you. Uh, Gary?
I do like the neighborhood revitalization program. It, it's gonna help a lot of younger, maybe first-time home buyers that probably couldn't otherwise afford to buy right out of the gate. Let, that gives them a chance to get their feet on the ground and maybe get some equity in their home before they have to really start ponying up the cash for the property taxes. Um, just like anything else, it needs to be reviewed and looked at on a regular basis. Um, I, I do disagree with Mr. Kane on the aspect that it being taken away in the event of the sale of a house. There's people's, people's situations change. They move in, somebody loses a job, gets a better job somewhere else and they have to move on. That's gonna help them move their house. It's gonna, it's not gonna shortchange the city on the tax money by letting that time period run out. It doesn't start over when the house sells. If it's at the halfway point when the house sells, half of it's still left. They should get the benefit of it.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, I agree that, that, uh, it's a good program, but I agree too that it needs to be reviewed and looked at. That maybe we're giving away too much of it or, you know, maybe the, the timeframes need to be cut short a little. I don't know. It is a good incentive for first-time home buyers is the way inflation, everything is right now. It's, it's, it's hard for kids to get started and like it was when we were kids, so. Uh, but anyway, yeah, I think it, it definitely needs to be reviewed. Um, but that we should go ahead and probably keep it in place too, so.
Thank you. Uh, the next question will be a two-minute question and, uh, um, the new city commission will be hiring, uh, new city manager. Uh, what would you, what will you be looking for in a city manager and what would be your ideal candidate? And we'll, I'm sorry, we'll start with you, Brian.
You know, I'm, I'm sad that, you know, we're, we're losing, uh, a city manager. Uh, uh, he's moving on to, uh, different things. Um, I think somebody that would, we need to have here is somebody that is familiar with our kind of demographic and our community size. Um, I think all, all too often we get people from sometimes larger communities that want something smaller as they head into, uh, maybe retirement age. Um, but I also think we need somebody who can think outside the box and, and bring a, a, a breath of fresh air to our community. Um, maybe things that they've seen work in other communities our size. Um, versus, uh, just somebody to have in that spot. I also think that, you know, we need to look at, uh, salary for our, uh, city manager's position. Because, uh, it's, it needs to be competitive with communities around us. Um, cause I think far too often we see the, we see people come into this community in these, what we consider high-paying rules. And they find that they can make a little more money thirty minutes up the road. Um, so I think we need to look at our, our pay scale to help bring in some good quality people.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Um, Emily?
Um, one of the first things I would look for is, um, how the person communicates. Uh, you can only tell so much in an interview, um, but I'm looking for some strong communication skills because oftentimes that's not something that can be taught. It's one of those soft skills, like, um, how somebody communicates and interacts with people is, is very important. I want someone committed to our community. Uh, someone who will immerse themselves here, bring their family here. Their family will enjoy it and learn to love Ottawa, just as all of us do. Um, I would look for somebody with strong leadership skills. Um, I have my master's degree in leadership, so I've studied it and I know what bad leadership looks like and we definitely do not want that. And so, um, I also know what good leadership looks like. So I, I do feel like, um, that is something, you know, hopefully we can find in, in a city manager, also being open-minded. Um, it's easy to kind of pigeonhole yourself in your office or, um, you know, be on an Ottawa island. You know, we're completely separated from other cities, but someone who's open-minded to hearing from other cities. What are they doing that works for them? Um, willing to adapt, uh, what we're doing to, uh, make it fit. I mean, it, whatever solutions they bring in may not be the solution for us and it may not work here. Or it may be the perfect solution and fix all of our problems. So, but I want them to be willing to adapt that, uh, to Ottawa and be able to make it work for us.
Thank you. Uh, Gary?
I think we need to look at the longevity, where they came from, what kind of a job they did where they came from. Um, do their goals for the city of Ottawa align with the community in general? Um, it needs to be somebody that's willing to take a stand and say what's on their mind, tell you what they believe, not just tell you what they think you wanna hear to get the job or to get you out of their office. Um, they need to be open-minded to hear you and hear what the citizens have to say. And they need to respond to the emails, respond to the phone calls. And when somebody has a concern, they need to listen. Listen to what's being said. Ev- everybody, everybody's opinion is important. And they all need to be heard.
Thank you, Gary. Jim?
Yeah, and they need to be a good leader and they need to be a good communicator. I mean, those, those are givens. You know, you need to kind of look at your background, see where they came from, see what kind of a community they came from. You know, and, and make sure they're going to be a good fit for Ottawa. And yeah, they need to be a good listeners, but they need to not only listen to the citizens, they need to listen to their department heads. I mean, you know, and not just be a decision maker, you know, and, and think outside the box and, and you know, I disagree a little on the pay. I mean, you know, sometimes you gotta earn, you know, your pay and uh, you know, just paying somebody a high wage to come in and take over may not necessarily mean you're getting the right guy for the job. In fact, I think uh, if I'm not mistaken that on average, the, the city of Ottawa wages are 11% higher than the state of Kansas in general. So, you know, I feel like we got a pretty good we're paying pretty good wages the way it is right now, but um, um, you know, they need to be a good money manager. They need to be able to look at the budgets and figure out, you know, you know, can we cut something here? Can we not cut something here? They need to go to the department heads. Or there's somewhere to cut and not just be a decision maker and expect everybody to follow along. So, I don't know, that, that would be what I'd be looking for, I think mostly.
Thank you, Jim. Mike, you have the last word on this question.
Okay, sure. Well, you know, our current city manager, Brian Stickos, he's done a great job. I, let's tell you, this guy is very intelligent. And I like about him too, he's a very much a financial guy. And so we've had a lot of good conversations and talks over the finances of city hall. We've got a $50 million budget here and it's nothing to, we, we have to be very cautious and guarded on that when we use that money. So, uh, I will say that about Brian, he's done a really good job as far as getting the budget together. I approached him one time, we recently, I'm glad to say that we passed the revenue neutral rate to this last year, this year back last month. Um, and that's a zero increase on the adblocker taxes. And it's a little bit of a challenge to do, but we were able to cut some budget, we cut some numbers and made that happen. And Brian was really good job, but figuring out where to put those cuts into place. And it happened. I'm really glad and honored and proud of that fact. When Brian came on the job, we had 26 applicants and they came from all over the country. In fact, one even came from Ottawa, Canada. We made sure they know, you know, this is in Kansas, don't you? And they, yes, he knew that, but I surprised by that one. Anyway, I was kind of out there. But we had a lot of candidates, which tells me that people want to come here and they want to be our manager. And so I know we're going to go through that process again here shortly. Uh, it's, it's quite a, it takes a lot of time. I'll, I'll put that onto it. I'm glad I'm retired now. I could devote more time to that. But nonetheless, it takes a lot of time to pro- go through all these applications. And I've often said, you know, these job interviews, they're, they're very important to do, but a lot of them, you, you feel like it's, job interviews like a, you know, a blind date that ends with a marriage proposal. Well, we gotta be careful with saying, I agree, but it's a, it's a very important thing. So uh, we got that coming ahead of us. I, the, the, our city manager worked closely with our neighborhood and community services department, which would be the zoning and planning and all that department. And this person has to be very willing to work in that department and have a yes attitude when people come in and work to yes is a key that I think we've got to have in that department. So that's what I'd say.
Thank you, Mike. The next question, we'll start with you, Emily, and um, we'll do, we'll look at a 90 second question. And um, it, it reads as follows, um, if you use a Facebook as a barometer, it appears that the, the biggest concerns of Ottawa citizens uh seem to be the property taxes and the golf course. What should be done to address these concerns?
Absolutely. So um, I definitely see all that. I don't always respond because usually that kind of uh can lead to a little more negativity and I don't have time to respond to all of those. But I will sometimes directly reach out to a person that I see on there and try to correct some information. So I do see that. I understand. We've mentioned property taxes before and I think the sales tax has potential uh to keep property taxes lower. And we stayed revenue neutral this year, so um, I feel like hopefully that has maybe settled down just a little bit. Um, I do understand the concerns for the golf course. What I hope people understand is that it's an amenity that we have. Um, you can view it almost like a park. Do I think there are ways we can um not make cuts? But I think there are some, some changes that can be made. I absolutely do. But I do think it was a purchase that was um worth making. And uh, if, I think if people viewed it um similar to the pool, the pool doesn't make us money. That's not our goal in having a pool to make money off of that is to have an amenity for kids uh similar to the golf course. We're not intending to make, you know, millions of dollars, although Johnson County and Overland Park, I think they said they made $2 million off their golf course last year. That's not going to be us, but um, I think uh just having the amenity in our community. And also um, I see Mimi Turner, her son was the golf champion for the city and that keeps our kids here. So.
Uh, Gary?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Um, if you use a, a Facebook as a barometer, it seems that the biggest concerns for the citizens of Ottawa uh seem to be property taxes and the golf course. What should be done to address those concerns?
Well, as far as property taxes are concerned, last year I paid $43,558.78 in property taxes. You're going to be hard pressed to find anybody in here that is more apt to try to keep the property taxes down. And that's, you can go, you can go to the county website and check that, check the details. It's all public record. So any, anything we can do to keep the property taxes under control, we need to be looking at and looking at hard. As far as the golf course is concerned, I'm, I'm not a golfer. I, I've never played golf. I do understand the draw of the golf course. As Commissioner Allen said, it's, it's kind of like a swimming pool. What concerns me is as Mayor, Mr. Skidmore said earlier, we've got a pool that needs millions of dollars spent on it, if not completely replaced. And as it's been stated in the commissioner meetings, the golf course that we just purchased needs a lot of money spent on it. We, we, we have a project car sitting over here at the park that we've not maintained and not fixed up. So instead of fixing it up, we spent the money on another project car. I, I, I think we need to be looking at it uh like that. Um, it's a nine hole golf course, not an 18 hole, which is not going to let us get the money income that Commissioner Allen indicated.
Thank you, Gary. Tim?
Yeah, uh, property taxes, you know, by reinstating the penny sales tax, that's going to help with property taxes or at least help with not having to have to increase them hopefully right away. And I think you know, as, as hard as I know, everybody looks at that budget and I'm sure there are ways that can be cut more, you know, and you just have to make a decision, you know? You have to do without things once in a while. And if that's what you have to do to get the taxes capped, then maybe that's what you do. You know, maybe, you know, at some point that's what the golf course needs to be. I, I'm not opposed to having amenities, but ones that are costing the taxpayer tons of money, that's a different story, you know? If it could get to a break even point and not be a drain on more tax dollars, then a golf course is great. You know, the swimming pool does need a lot of work done to it. It's going to be a lot of money. But it seemed to, did get ignored to move forward with a golf course. You know, I don't know, I wouldn't, you know, in any of those meetings or I don't know why, but uh, you know, I feel like if a golf course could, could at least be a break even amenity for the city, then you know, sure, why not, you know, keep it. But I feel like the pool gets used by a lot more people than probably what the golf course is being used, you know, from citizens of Ottawa.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Mike?
Well, yeah, uh, property taxes, again, that's something all the commissioners, we, we pay our property taxes as well. Not much as Gary's got there, but nonetheless, it's still an important issue that we all pay those, those taxes. Uh, the city, our portion of the, of the, of the property tax, right around 25%. And so I just like to point that out that, you know, we are just a portion of the total here. I think we had somehow about, about 16 or 17 people came to our budget meeting and talked to us. And the county only had five, is that right? So bringing like five or six people? So anyway, we've got to figure out something. You're, you're good. But I, I just want to point that out with the shared tax with the different taxing entities in town and it's not just a city thing. I want to make sure people know that. Uh, but it, but yeah, it needs to be addressed and that's why I was really happy about our 0% increase on property tax total dollar adblocker taxes. Yeah, the golf course uh was a difficult decision. Uh, it was failing as far as the upkeep. And we, we had to do something here. We just couldn't let it go. And so, yeah, we did buy it for a very good price, very low price and I'm, I'm glad for that part. We do need to spend some money out there. We got a clubhouse that's got to come down someday. We've got some future expenditures we're looking at. Now, we might talk about expenditures out there, but we haven't spent the money. And so that's important for people to know that. By the way, I do not play golf either. I, I, a good friend of Gary Brockus in the crowd here, we used to play golf together and he kind of suggested I find another sport. So I went to disc golf and I'm enjoying disc golf.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Brian, you have the last word on this question.
You know, property taxes, I think are a concern for, for anybody and everybody that owns a property in our community. The average home uh that's worth about $207,000 pays roughly $870 in property tax to the city. To the city. Right? So uh, the rest of that then gets doubled out to the county and USD 290. So, in, in the big picture of property taxes, the city is not the biggest chunk. But I get your concerns because your concerns are the same as mine. My property taxes have more than doubled in the 15 years that I've owned my home. So, golf course, I dabble in golf. I'm not very good. I, I'm sure that, you know, like Mike, I probably be told to take a different sport. But I, I see your concerns because I think the, because of the condition of the golf course when the city bought it, we're seeing a lot of money fly out the door to get it back up to a reasonable level where people are wanting to come back and play. Uh, for a long time, people would be leaving Ottawa to go play golf in Lawrence, out at Vassar, uh, and up in Kansas City. I counted today about two o'clock or so and there were 35 people out there golfing. So it's a good sign.
Uh, thank you. Gary, we'll start with you on this question and, and let's do a 90 second question. How important is it to be a team player while serving on, on the auto city commission?
It's extremely important to be a team player. You know, everybody is responsible for the decisions that are made and everybody has to answer for them. It is important though, that each member be able to voice their opinion and have their opinion heard by the entire commission and not succumb to peer pressure when they may or may not be in the minority. It, that's extremely important that don't, don't go along just to get along. If, if you have, if you have a concern, speak up, make it heard. And if somebody can tell you that, hey, Gary, you're wrong and this is why you're wrong and justify it, be man enough or woman enough to say, hey, yeah, you're right. I didn't look at it from that perspective.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Tim?
Well, you know, they always say there's no eye in team. So yeah, you, you have to be a team player. You have to be able to negotiate and you have to be able to compromise. I mean, if you can't do that, you can't, you'll never get along in life. I don't care what you do. But you need to be able to stand your ground and have your own opinions and not, you just cave in. I had a business up in Kansas City and had two partners. And one partner was just, man, he was just, it didn't matter. Somebody said something, oh, let's do it. Let's do it right now. And then the other guy, he was like uber conservative, you know, and I was more right in the middle and we'd sit down and we'd hash it out. And then we'd all come to him in agreement, you know, instead of just somebody jumping to the gun or somebody saying absolutely no. So, and I think that's what you have to do in everything. That's what you have to do as a commissioner and, and uh, so yes, team playing is very important.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with that same sentiment. I, we, and I feel like even our current commission has been, we're a very diverse group. And I appreciate that fact too. We come from different backgrounds of work, uh personalities, family, everything is very, very different. I have that diversity that's important to have on this. Uh, I guess I'm the old guy right now and I guess I never thought about that, but I-
I never said that.
Okay, very. I'm the old guy, I'll say it then. But I've still got a lot of energy left. I feel very good. Uh, but yeah, but I, and I also feel like having retired from banking, uh, I've got more time to commit. I think it is good to, in fact, I would say that it's good to have a banker on the commission. I know and Blake mentioned earlier, you started in '05, I think, and he served all that time and I served with him for a while and then I've been ever since. And I feel like when we talk about this much money and dealing with it, and we dealt with money, other people's money almost our whole life. I was in banking 44 years and you're getting, going to get there someday soon, youngster. But uh, but it really is, I think, important to have that background, uh, not only in handling money, but also in, in management. Uh, the 44 years I've been in banking, I've been in management for about two thirds of that. So it requires hiring and firing people and, and sometimes it's great, sometimes it's not so great, but nonetheless, it's, it's taught me a lot about how to manage people. And we do a lot, we got a lot of employees here at city hall. Of course, the city manager takes care of the details of that, uh, but still the same, we, we work together and, and I think that to have that diversity is important for all of us. Uh, we, we can help represent the entire city is what I'm thinking on that part of.
Thank you, Mike. And it's been 38 years for me, so.
Okay, you're getting close.
Brian? Uh, I do absolutely think it's important to be a team player. I mean, what you see up here is representative, representative of the number of people on the city commission. And each one of us on the commission will come with differing ideas on how to do things and, and what the city needs and wants and and we have to have the freedom to have good, honest, open dialogue. I think our, our, our country today is so hard pressed for good dialogue that uh, uh, you know, I think it needs to start here at the local level. And you know, we've already had disagreements with me up here and that's okay. You know, I can handle that. And that's what we need. We need people to say, nah, I don't agree with you. Okay, why? And then go from there. And we need to be able to come to a consensus as a team on how to uh get things accomplished for our citizens to make this place a good place to live. Thank you. Um, Emily?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always, no matter what you do, it's important to be a team player. But I think it's, it's, while it's important to be a team player, a good team player, it's important to be an individual thinker as well. A lot of the decisions that we make are, um, we don't get to discuss with each other. So there's not that opportunity to have a conversation with, you know, more than one person at a time due to different open meetings laws. But, so we don't really get to discuss these things before or outside of our meetings, right? So um, I do think um building that working relationship is great and building that relationship with staff is great and is definitely very necessary, but also just being able to listen to the input from citizens and take that and be like, as I mentioned, an individual thinker and um make that vote how the citizens would want you to vote.
Thank you. Tim, we'll uh start the next question with you and it'll be a 90 second question. Let's make this a two minute question, sorry. And um, a good portion of the city's budget has to do with public utilities, uh, the wastewater, uh, storm water, power and, and water supply. And let's uh talk specifically about our electrical supply. What needs to be done uh for the power grid that, that you see and how is, how is that going to be paid for?
I'll be honest with you, I really don't know. I haven't, you know, been involved enough or looked at stuff. I know the power grid's always been an issue in the infrastructure. But what needs to be done or what kind of money needs to be spent? I, I don't know. You know, I know we have issues, but, but uh, I don't know. I feel like in the whole scheme of things that it's really not too bad uh compared to some places. So I don't know. I know they've talked about an increase in the electric bill and, and uh, I don't know, uh, other ways to pay for it. Maybe that is the best way to pay for it, but honestly, I probably can't speak to that as well as some of the others here, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim. Mike?
Well, yeah, I'll take a stab at this. Yeah, I, uh, we just had a report here today about grants that we've had a great success and Melissa Sherman's our- Melissa Sherman's our city clerk and she's an excellent grant writer. And over the last, I think it's been five or six years, we've accumulated $11 million in grants here. And think about that, $11 million, we didn't have to borrow money or use our own cash for. And I love that when we use grants from Grant was used to refurbish this place. So I think, I appreciate that she does a great job with grant writing. And I don't know what we're paying her. We're not paying her enough, I think, but whatever she's getting, it's a great thing to have. So with the electric grid, I would think the others certainly possibly grants that are out there that we can help pay for that. Utility rates, I, we've studied this constantly and we, we measure ourselves with other communities. And we're right in the mix, right in the middle as far as other communities of similar size. And I think that's important for people to know. Plus, we are a nonprofit, if you want to call it that, nonprofit in our electric generation. You know, if people who use Evergi or wherever you're at in the country, you're dealing with a for-profit corporation there. So when they raise their rates, you're at their mercy. They can just cut you off, I guess. I don't know if you don't want to pay the bill. But we have very cognizant of people here in town. We've got a lot of senior citizens. I'm one. And we don't like, we got on fixed income. And so we are cognizant of that, but cautious of rate increases. But we have a system set up now where we let it go too long with, before we raised rates. And then we started raising them and then, and incrementally due to about the rate of inflation is what we're looking at. And so we are having to go up a little higher on some of the rates gradually. That's the idea. Also, our sewer bills, some days we see your sewer bills seem to be higher than your water bill. That seemed unusual, but it takes 1.7 times more dollars to treat our sewage water than it is to treat the water that we drink. So the people in Ottawa, we should appreciate sending them clean water. I don't, we haven't got a thank you note yet or a Christmas card or anything, but we will someday maybe. But I think that's important for people to know that.
Uh, Brian?
You know, public utilities are one of those things that we don't see a lot of because some of it's just underground and we don't see it. So it's out of sight, out of mind, so to speak. The electrical supply is not one of those. And we have an aging electrical grid where it's getting harder and harder of firing parts to actually repair some of these issues. I think our public utility workers have done a fantastic job. And much respect to those folks that get out there in the middle of storms on a dark night and get our power back on. I know it's inconvenient for us as, as property owners to lose our power and have to go around and reset all our clocks. But I, I think we need to look at how do we budget in repairing and replacing some of these electrical supply issues that we're going to have here in the next three to five years? And it's going to start partly with getting rid of some of these trees that are over these power lines. So, thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Yeah. So if we're focusing on electrical, one of the things that we're doing, I believe it has been out for bid. I'm not quite sure where we're at in the process, but it was to create the new crossing over the river for our electrical grid. Right now, we currently have wooden poles that cross the river. And we've seen pictures of them literally just kind of falling apart, right? They're, they're old. They need replaced. This would be definitely a more stable structure. I believe it would be metal, steel. And get power over to the north side, hopefully in a more reliable manner. The city has also really taken a focus on trimming trees out of power lines. I know using the reporting a concern thing, function on the website, similar to what we talked about earlier. I've reported trees and power lines and you can do that just right on there and they will come out and fix it. And then we have really, in the past year or so, I, he's probably been here a year. But we have Director Sneelen that is now over that department. So we have new leadership in that department. New eyes, new perspective on our infrastructure. So I think he's definitely bringing that into our focus about the electrical grid and making sure that it was, it is up to date. I, as I mentioned, I worked for Garmin and power was out there the other day. And we were sitting there in dark for about an hour and everybody around me was talking about how often the power goes out at their house in Johnson County. And it was pretty often. And I asked if they could get on Ottawa, Kansas news and post how often it goes out there because it was a lot more than here. But really we are pretty lucky. I, I consider us lucky anyway. So it's definitely a focus for that department.
Thank you. Gary, you have the last word on this question.
Like Emily said, the, the big thing is the structures getting the power across the river. She kind of stole my thunder on that. I've seen the pictures of the structures and I'm not sure how they're still standing in a high windstorm. They are in bad shape. All in all, I think the city does a pretty good job of maintaining, given what they have to work with. As far as utility rates, the cost, the generation and distribution cost, whether it's electric, water, sewer, whatever. The generation and distribution costs need to be monitored. And we need to make sure that our rates are covering those costs plus a little bit of set aside for future upgrades. It's, that's, that's extremely important. And it, it doesn't matter if you're talking about the utilities or whether you run a small business of your own. You need to make sure you've got enough money coming in and set back for upgrades. And our city is, I know, I notice it more on the sewer and the water. Our city crews, they, they do an exceptional job of working and replacing and maintaining our system as opposed to hiring it out to contractors, which in a lot of instances, and I'm going to kick my own self in the shin here. It's, it's going to be more expensive to hire contractors to come in and do it as opposed to self perform. So it's, it's just very important. And I, I think for the most part, our guys do a really good job.
Thank you, Gary. And as a person that works on the north side, having a new structures, bringing that power across, I'm looking forward to that. So. But that is, my goal was to get us out of here within two hours and we're coming down to the, to the end of the evening. We're going to start back here with Mike and give you two minutes to, to wrap up. Perhaps talk about the leadership qualities that you have. And, and if there's anything else that you would like to, to add that we may not have covered.
Okay, good. Well, to start with the story, when I was first term as mayor, as many years ago, worked with the finance department, we had some debt that was, I think the interest rate was a little bit too high. And so I got with our finance department and we worked out a deal to get it refinanced. And, you know, I was very glad to get that done. I, you know, we figured it up and saved the city about $750,000. And the term of that bond would have been at that rate. And so the stories, well, this is really happened. I came home, I was telling my wife, I was going to tell her, oh, by the way, we did something at City Hall. I'm kind of proud of. We, we saved the citizens $750,000. And she said, well, sit down, Mr. Mayor, because I just had lunch with so and so. She didn't know Ottawa even had a mayor. So it tells me something that we, we don't do this for the recognition. We don't, we do it because we want to serve our community. And like I, I've lived here all my life, except for 17 years where I was, we were in central Kansas. But I was thrilled with the opportunity to come back to my hometown to live here. And it's a great place to, to live, to work, to worship, to play, to do everything right here in our community and raise a family. And I feel very blessed. You know, I feel like the Lord's really blessed me with this position. I'm thankful for and honored to be able to serve. Win or lose, it's been a great run. I would say that for sure. I, I love being in here. I, a lot of great memories. We've accomplished a lot of things, I feel. And some things maybe not so popular. We talked about replacing sewers, replacing water lines. You don't see those things. And, but they still got to be dealt with because you have a lot of older infrastructure here in town. But, but I'm really happy to see the developments, the housing projects taking place. And I'm really excited to see what the future is in our community. So I still think I've got some bullets in my gun to, to use. And I think I still got some room to grow and with our community. So I'm looking forward to, to continuing on. So I would appreciate your vote on November 4th. And by the way, thank you for all the sponsors and for the city hall taking care of the video and for the chamber too. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. Brian?
Yeah, you know, first of all, I just want to say thank you to Auto Chamber and the city for allowing us this space. And to you folks out there for taking the time out of your evening and your busy schedules to come and listen to us talk. It, it's so appreciated. And, and I've got, I mean, this, the citizens of Ottawa are the best part of Ottawa, in my opinion. And when I moved here 20 years ago, I knew nothing about this town, other than my wife was born and raised here. But in those 20 years, I've grown to love this, this town and its people. And that is why, you know, just two years after I moved here, I thought I needed to get involved with our community. And I've been involved with our community ever since, in some way, shape or form, whether that's school board, planning commission, hopefully here. Whether that's serving on a local church board, being a small business owner in this town and working in the service industry. My entire adult life has been about serving. I joined the military at the age of 18 and I've traveled the world. Grew up in Los Angeles, which is a big, big town. Yeah, I don't think I would choose to live anywhere else at this point. I love this town tremendously and it's, this town has a lot going for it. And I hope with your help that I can be your next commission member and help build a better future for Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Emily?
Yeah. You had mentioned specific qualifications. I, I had mentioned before, I have my master's degree in leadership. And I feel like every day that I, well, every day, I mean, really, we're never off the clock in this position. But I get to put that to use every day and that's very exciting for me. And yet I can still go on Facebook and find out that I'm wrong every day. So that's always humbling. But I really have enjoyed serving on the city commission for, again, I mentioned, I started 10 years ago and I've served in total about seven years. And sometimes people ask me why I do it. I don't always have an answer depending on the day, because some days are harder than others. But I did see a quote the other day and it said, if you're too big to serve, you're too small to lead. And that really, that really hit me. I have never felt too big to serve by any means. And so I'm honored to have been chosen by everyone to do this position for seven years. If given the opportunity to serve, I still have several things that I would like to see to fruition. I would love to see those streets get fixed. Don't get me wrong. And also, I mean, it would be great to have a new pool, but I, I think we have some other, I think streets need, need kind of priority here. I've always taken pride in my responsiveness, uh, sitting up here. I hope that people feel the same if you've ever tried to reach out to me. And that I will continue to listen to the concerns of the citizens because we are your voice. So I appreciate you all for coming here tonight. I didn't expect it to be spilled out into the hallway. So I hope everyone is okay standing and, you know, you maybe got your steps in tonight. I don't know. But we appreciate you all and thanks to the chamber for hosting this and giving us a chance to get our information out there. And just be sure to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Gary?
Like the others have said, I want to thank everybody for participating in this and helping to put it together. It's, it's very important that everybody's views be heard here. You, you've all got a chance to kind of see where we all stand on different things. You said, you mentioned qualifications. As far as qualifications, one of the things that I think helps me in my business, and it, it tends to hurt me at times too. I expect my employees to work just as hard as I do. I don't expect, I won't ask them to do anything that I won't do or haven't done, but I expect them to work just as hard as I do. And for what I do, most of, they're generally half my age or considerably younger. I tell them, I don't expect you to run a race, but I expect you to keep up with me. I'm told I expect too much out of, out of them sometimes, but well, that's just part of it. They're paid and they're paid well. As a employee of the citizens of Ottawa, as a commissioner, I will work very hard for you. And I will treat your tax dollars as if they were coming out of my pocket. That's, that's extremely important. It's awful easy to give somebody else's money away. But when it's your own, it, it's not so easy. And that, and that's, that's the way the tax dollars need to be treated. It's, you, you don't give anybody else's money away. We talked about property taxes and they were, it was mentioned, well, the county does this and the school board does that. You know what? They've got boards of their own to answer for those issues and they do. I, I've seen the meetings. As a commissioner, I'm going to answer for what the city does with your tax dollars and not make excuses and push it off on somebody else.
Thank you, Gary. Tim, you have the last word.
Oh, man. Well, you know, like I said before, I was born. That's a fast two minutes. I thought, I didn't think Melissa was here. Yeah, I was born and raised here, went to school here. Yeah, my son still lives here. He's raising his family here. I've always been on boards and been a community supporter. I've managed stores in town at North Pences. I'm sure nobody remembers that because, well, Michael remembers that. And, you know, worked for Pences, worked around town all my life. And, you know, I've been on the chamber board, been a boy scout leader. You know, I just feel like giving back to the community is something you need to do. You know, I promise I'll be a good steward of the tax dollars to make sure, you know, where they're being spent as wisely as possible. You know, I'm hoping that, I was born here. I've only lived in four different homes my whole life, probably within about a mile and a half of each other. And that all wind up dying here. So hopefully I can make this a good place to spend the rest of my days and make it a better place for all citizens of Ottawa too. So I appreciate your vote on the 4th. I think that's all I got.
Okay. Well, thank you, candidates, for attending and answering our questions this evening. Once again, I'd like to thank the sponsors of this event. The Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce Legislative Action Committee, KOFO, and the Franklin County Farm Bureau Association. I'd also like to thank the city of Ottawa, specifically the, the IT department who is, is, has, I guess we still use the word tape. It is recording this, this event and streaming on, on Facebook Live. It will also be available on the, the chamber's website to, to, to view again, if you'd like to do so. And, and then I believe there's a link on the, the city's website as well. But once again, the, there are five candidates for the city commission. You, you can vote for up to three candidates of, of, to, for, in the election, which will occur on November the 4th. And the, the, the top two vote receivers will have, be elected to a four-year term. And then third place will have a two-year term. And the advanced voting, it says here that it begins on Monday, October 20th. It ends on Monday, November 3rd at 12:00 PM. And the last day to apply for an advanced voting ballot is Tuesday, October 28th. With a general election following on Tuesday, November 4th. I'd like to thank the folks that are our question table, Louis Reed and Linda Alderman. I'd also like to thank our tax, our timekeeper, tax, Greg Bohannon. And, and following when I'm, I've given them several different times for the questions. So thank you all for attending and good night.